Call to order, Board of Education meeting, May 26, 7 o'clock. John, take attendance. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment? I'll assume that's a no. Superintendent Watson, COVID data update?
Thank you, President Colin. If we could pull up the slides, please. So currently in the state of Michigan, looking at the Michigan first dose tracker for COVID-19 vaccines, we are right about 58.1%. You'll notice this is a little bit different than the diagram last time with the governor's vaccination, the normal plan. With the recent CDC updates, that has been pulled down, and now it's simply a gauge for seeing how many doses have been administered and what percentage we're at. Next slide, please. So a couple of the key things with the weekly COVID-19 report coming out of Oakland County Health Division. The percentage of cases hospitalized in the last 14 days is up, is at 2.1%. Everything else is trending down or neutral, including healthcare capacity strength, which is now, we're seeing the lower numbers of COVID patients in Oakland County hospitals. All age groups continue to trend down, and the case count has decreased by about 1,300 from the last report. Next slide, please. As you can see, the daily case rate continues to decrease. We're now seeing daily case rates of under 100 for Oakland County. Next slide, please. When we look at our patients, and this is statewide trends in hospitalization, we look at patients that are not in critical care but hospitalized, patients on ventilators, and patients in critical care. All data is trending down. Next slide, please. Now for case count and for percent positive. Both are now in yellow. We're actually at the lowest case count per day since June of 2020. Looking at our seven-day rolling average throughout the United States, we're about 27,000 COVID-positive per day. Next slide, please. Thank you. President Colin?
Any questions? Okay. With that, I will go to my president's speech, president's report. Okay. Later this night, we as a board are going to honor our 2020, 2021 student interns and student advisory council. I want to dedicate my president's speech tonight honoring student voice, which has this year made a significant impact on policies and procedures for our high school and the district. We have developed two groups in the high school, the Student Advisory Committee and the Student Equity Council. The Student Advisory Committee is made up of 87 students from all grades. This group meets with the high school administration and teachers, leaders, once a month. The purpose of the Student Advisory Committee is to support and advance our four high school cornerstones. This year, students worked in subcommittees to help with the high school policies and to support the student body. These committees included student transitions, school policies, student mental health, equity and diversity, sports and clubs, school spirit, support for student and student teacher relationships. Over the summer of 2020, students from Bloomfield Hills High School and the International Academy joined together to form a new group called the Student Equity Council. This group of dedicated students had weekly virtual meetings and had worked tirelessly to create a restorative, equitable school culture across all Bloomfield Hills schools. Their mission statement reads, "We work to foster and preserve an equitable, justice-based learning environment across the Bloomfield Hills School District by holding the district and community accountable in instances of discrimination and injustice and creating policy and programs to cultivate equity." The students worked on the following this year. Collaborative work with the board and administration to create and pass the resolution to eradicate racism. Worked with administration and teachers to bring anti-racism training to student leadership and led nine classes presented at the Kevin Song's Annual Conference on Suicide. Held a fishbowl conversation for the BHS staff to share the experiences of our students. Created equitable teaching guides to share with the entire BHS staff about inclusive language, classroom environment, and bias in the classroom. Created slides for all of our staff to recognize a person a day for both Black History Month and Asian American History Month, with plans to create for more months next year. Worked collaboratively and with administration to create a process for students to report incidents of hate and bias. On behalf of the school board, I wanted to thank the Student Advisory Council and Equity Council for the work this year. With that, we will go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Colin. Just a couple of things. One, we had two very successful vaccine clinics that we were able to offer, one at Bloomfield Hills High School and the other at Wing Lake. That's something we'll definitely consider doing in the future, especially since there is potentially the opportunity for young people 2 to 11 in the near future to be vaccinated. I also had the opportunity and the privilege to sit down with some of our prep students and take them through a mock interview exercise as they get ready to prepare to join the workforce and go out to work. It was just an amazing two hours of my life. The prep students were incredibly prepared. They had great answers. They had great follow-up questions. There is no doubt in my mind that when they go out into the world and interview for a job, they will be hired. Summer school registration is going well, in particular K-5. It's nice to see so many parents taking advantage of the summer school opportunities that are going to be here for our students. I think it's going to be an amazing time, not just academically, but socially as well. And lastly, we are still, as we all can imagine, preparing for the fall. Our plan is to be fully open and fully in-person. It's going to be school to what, basically what you remember school to be like, but with what we've learned from COVID. We've learned that flexibility is key. We've learned that giving opportunities that maybe didn't exist are key. And so we're really excited for the fall. I know we're not quite finished with this year, but always looking ahead for what we can do for our students in leveraging some of the lessons from COVID as we move forward. Thank you. President Colin?
Okay. Next on the agenda, special recognition of our student 2020, 2021 student board interns and advisory council. First, I'm going to read another quick speech. I now want to take this time to honor our 2020, 2021 student interns and student advisory council. Maggie Murray, Paul Salaya, Adriana Calibert, Janaki Radakrishna, Leanna Jindali, Erin Williams, Heather Chen. These seven individuals worked tirelessly together to provide our board and district over the last year of feedback from students on a variety of policy issues impacting students in our district, not just this year, but years to come. In addition to not just sending out the surveys, these students did detailed data analytics and put together presentations that was easy to understand and very informative. The students participated in biweekly calls with our superintendent, providing feedback along with engaging with many students and parents at all levels to provide that unified voice that we were looking for. You all provided to all of us why we started the program and that students' voice have, and that students should have a voice in key policymaking decisions. I cannot be prouder of all of you and what you have accomplished. On behalf of the school board, district, and community, I want to thank you for all you have done and you have made a significant impact on your community. Thank you. And before I recognize any one of my colleagues, would you like to say a few words? I know you guys are not speechless.
I'll reiterate what I said to a couple of them a couple hours ago at the groundbreaking ceremony. You know, we have a lot of talented kids in our district, bright, organized, capable. But in this group, there's also something more, which is the kindness and the humbleness and really just all heart piece. And so as one gets older, one realizes how so important that is to the equation. So thank you, guys, for just being who you are and being willing to care about other kids who you go to school with.
Anyone else?
Can I say just a couple of things?
Of course.
So I personally want to thank you for giving up time every other week to have that conversation with me. The things you shared, the honesty, and just the overwhelming response you had to make things better, not for you, but for the students in the school district. The empathy you showed, the caring, just how unselfish you were with everything. I really appreciate it. And other students, and even some adults in this room, may not realize how impactful what you shared kind of helped lead us to some of the decisions we needed to make. It's really easy to look at things from our lens, like as an adult, this is what I feel and this is what I think. But hearing you share how it impacts you, the decisions we make, and what it sounds like to you and what it feels like to you, really makes a difference. And you were beyond transparent. I believe you were brutally honest when you needed to be. And that's okay, right? That's okay. You know, someone told me a long time ago, if you want to help people, you tell them the truth. And if you want to help yourself, you tell people what they want to hear. So I appreciate you being upfront, being honest, and trying to help me along the way. So thank you.
I just want to echo everything that everyone has said, and speaking truth to power. You'll hear that said, and that's exactly what you did, and that's what you're there for. Also, for those of you that are going to be going to become a senior, you know, we will see you all over the next year. And for those of you who will be leaving us and going off to bigger and better things, good luck to you over the next year and your future careers.
Okay. With that, we have personalized certificates. We also have sweatshirts that will be mailed to you. And then we're going to take a couple of minutes break after I bring each of you up to give you certificates for pictures. So we'll go on a five, 10-minute break. Okay? Heather? I'll go over there for the rest. I'll go over there, Heather. That's fine. Remember, we're all new to being back in the lineup. You can come up here to the podium. That's okay. Here, Heather. You got it? Now the Twitter feed? No, I just can't.
Exactly. All right. There we go. Perfect.
Thank you.
Good. We're good.
Okay. Adriana?
Thank you.
You guys are welcome to stay for the meeting, or... Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right. We're going to take a break. We're going to take pictures with the board members, and we'll take group shots. So we'll come back at 7:20? Seven minutes?
7:40.
Okay, six minutes. All right. Before we go to... That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go back to, before we go back to the agenda, I want to also recognize, and maybe we could, you know, I also want to recognize who's online for the meeting. One of our board interns, and I have her certificate here, Maggie Murray. And as board intern, similar to what I said earlier about, you know, everyone, you know, just again, wanted to thank you, Maggie, for your service for the year and everything that you've done. So I know you're online, and thank you very much. And we'll be sending you... The other... Paul's on as well? Okay. So Paul and Maggie. Okay.
Paul and Maggie. Thanks for Paul and Maggie.
Thanks, Paul and Maggie. Appreciate it. There's Paul. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We thought you were having senioritis.
Exactly. They have enough events, and they've been to enough events. So, yeah, we thought, you know, and they just were at our groundbreaking ceremony as well. So both of them. Thank you for everything you guys have done for the year. Really appreciate it, Paul. Really appreciate you too, Maggie. Thank you very much. With that, we will go to consent agenda. John?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the closed session of April 29, 2001. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of April 29, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the study session of May 2021. Further, move the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented. I move that the Board of Education approve the disbursement reports as presented. Move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to develop the millage rates and compliance with the state guidelines and furnish such rates to the appropriate taxing authorities by May 31, 2021, in order to levy and collect summer property taxes for all BHS voter approved millage rates. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented. I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of one Ford Bronco Sport from Gornow Ford in the amount of $26,210. Funding will come from the Capital Equipment Fund. Move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of one Ford E350 cutaway box truck with service lift gate for food services in the amount of $48,113 to be funded by the Food Service Fund. Move that the Board of Education award bid number 2105, Loser Flooring Removal in the amount of $52,625 to Abatement and Demolition Services LLC, plus contingency for a total approved budget of $57,887.50 to be funded by the Bond Fund. I move that the Board of Education approve bid number 2106, Nagel Paving, Trench Drain, and Asphalt Repair in the amount of $127,890, $61,200 for Conant, and $66,690 for transportation trench drain. With the addition of contingency and professional fees, bringing the total approved budget to $168,693.49 to be funded by the Sinking Fund. That is the end.
I could do it this way, this way. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Consent passes. General discussion. Report of FFLA, Siva?
Thank you, Paul. I'll first, so again, this was a meeting which was held last week on May 20 at 4:00 PM. Present were Paul Wills from Plant Morant Crassa, the team from Barton Mallow, Jael French, in addition to the administration of the FFLA committee. I'll first give you an update on the bond program. There are four bids currently out. Bid package one is demolition work at our middle schools, which is currently in progress. Bid package two, which is really the foundation and site work for North Hills, is coming to the board for approval today. Very good response. An average of five bids was received in each category, which exceeds the typical three per category. I'd like to say we're happy to say we're within budget. And so the board's going to be approving this shortly after. Bid package number three, which is for North Hills construction, the bids are due June 3. And bid package number four for South Hills, the bid is request for release later this week. So that's pretty much it on the construction update for the bond. In terms of the design work for the elementary schools, the team is working through that right now. There were some issues identified at Conant related to traffic flow and parking, and the team is working through that. In terms of the finances, Paul Wills, the owner's rep, has updated our latest dashboard on our website. And I'm happy to say, everything's on budget and on track in terms of timing. The next item on the FFLA team's agenda was vehicle replacements, which John just got approved by the board consent agenda a few minutes ago. Next item on the agenda was a lease extension for Traub Elementary for the IA. We're talking about a one-year lease extension to the Traub facility, which will be shared with the IA Consortium. So we will get more details as part of the June budget update that the board will approve at that time. The next point of discussion is on the budget. There's additional work this year because of all the COVID grants, additional summer programming. All of those details will be presented to the board at the June study session. And that's pretty much all I had to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a quick question. It's a little detailed, but the lease of Traub by the IA, does that money come from the tuition of the 10 districts that attend that school?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's...
That's part of the, yeah, the bulk of the revenue, I'm going to say 95-plus percent, comes from the tuition from all the school districts.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Siva. With that, we will go to Jennifer, reporter of the Board Instructional Committee.
Hello. So the Board Instructional Committee met on May 10. During the first part of the meeting, we continued talking about the strategic plan goals for Goal Area 1, which is curriculum and instruction. We talked about specifics relating to numerical tables that we're crafting regarding specific goals for standardized testing. We also talked in that same category of the strategic plan. We talked about a climate survey that we are going to implement next spring to gauge our social and emotional wellness, and some of the aspects of equity and inclusion that are in our values. The Learning Services Team showed us a wonderful new resource that I'm happy to email anyone who's not on BIC. It's called, hold on a second. I always want to call it Pandora. Okay. It's called Panorama. And it's a bank of survey questions that have been researched. I'm not sure where this Panorama group is or what institution they represent. But they have a whole blurb on the science of surveys. And just one fun fact that I wanted to share with you guys is, according to their research, they don't ask questions that say, "Do you agree?" Or, "How much do you agree or disagree with the following?" Because they say that subconsciously, there's always agreement bias. You know, that most people are trying to agree, right, with what's being said. So I thought that was, that was really interesting. So anyway, huge bank of questions, and we were, we can pick through it and pick out the ones that we think should be on our survey that most closely align with our value statements, our mission, our vision. And so then we went on to talk about MYKIP a little bit. Carrie explained to us that MYKIP will be essentially be replacing the school instructional, school improvement plans, excuse me, and will almost necessarily force more alignment between the buildings because it's, you know, it's not all these different pieces of SIPs. It's going to be SIPs living in one place. When MYKIP is completed, that basically is what is submitted to the state for the district improvement plan. And so we talked a little bit about the next Teaching and Learning Council, which will continue this work. I'm not sure, Todd, if you're on the call, maybe, could you... I think the Teaching and Learning Council is going to morph into the MYKIP committee, but I'm not totally positive about that. But to remind you guys, the Teaching and Learning Council is a new entity that was started this year. We had one meeting in January. We're going to have another meeting before school's out. And there are reps from every building, and every building brings their data, and every building, and then there's like a shared goal setting and sort of brainstorming session for these, for this council. Then we discussed enrollment projections for Bloomfield Virtual in the fall, and how, just really briefly, what we think that might look like. And then the last thing we talked about was that Michelle presented to the committee on the work that she and her group have been doing for Goal Area 5 of the strategic plan. And so I'm, right now, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle because you have more and better details than I do.
So, yes, it was requested that I come to the meeting to present an update, not validation. So we do note it was presented to them as if it was still a draft form. And so to gather feedback from their committee, so there's lots of great additional comments that were provided from BIC members that I was able to take back to my committee. So we'll be ready to present that to you all in June.
Yep. That was our meeting. Any, any questions? Yes.
One comment.
Yes.
There's a process that normally is followed in doing all this goal setting, which is you do your values, then you do your mission and vision, then you do your goals. And because of the way things have evolved over the last few years, we're sort of doing it a little bit out of order. Where, as you know, we've been spending a lot of time with Michelle Harmala developing our mission and vision statements, but at the same time, we're already developing our goals. And the BIC committee has been working very diligently with Learning Services on that. So once we finish up our vision statement, we need to make sure that it meshes very nicely with the goals that have already been worked on. So again, typically, that's not the way you do things, but we just have to, as we finish up our vision statement over the next few weeks and a month, we're going to have to see what those goals are and make sure that they're in perfect alignment with the, with the vision. Because once we have the goals, then those are the starting points for the MYKIP process that Vice President Marlo Matlow talked about. So again, we need to make sure that everything is in sync and aligned. And that's kind of something that we, the board, need to make sure that everything kind of links up.
Yeah. I've brought that up in committee, and we talked about it a little bit, and we just had a group decision that it, there was no reason to wait, but yes, that we are mindful of the out-of-order-ness, and we are mindful that once we have the vision and mission, we're going to go back and cross-check and make sure that everything is represented.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right. There's no other questions. Lisa, Oakland County School Board Association update?
I don't really have much to add. Just June 16 at 6:00 PM is the annual dinner. It's going to be at Bowers Farm. I hope all of us go. A couple of board members are going to receive MASB awards, so let's go and cheer them on.
Thank you.
We get such great feedback from other districts. We were there, it was a year ago, right?
At the farm event.
Yeah. So that, that just made me so proud, like, to be able to host that. So it was fun.
Yeah. And this year, we're, we get to be the inaugural event for the new outdoor... What's the technical word for the porch?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Porch.
It's not the children's.
It's not a porch. It's just something fancier than a porch, but it's the new thing that they built off the Student Activity Building. And it's going to be really cool. We kind of checked in on it a couple of weeks ago, and it looks like it's going to be a very cool space, so. very cool space, so.
Looking forward to it. Dee, Oakland County Health Division update. Jennifer?
Yes, so the Oakland County Health Division has been meeting with school boards every other week. We met an hour before this meeting started, and my notes are nicely written on a napkin here. So luckily, things are, basically, in a nutshell, things are going, obviously, in the right direction, as we saw from all the green arrows on the data sheet. That was interesting, Pat, that you showed 58% of Michigan is vaccinated, 65% of Oakland County is vaccinated. So the Health Division is very happy with that. They are just busy, 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 having clinics all over the place, and that was wonderful, having the clinic at BHHS last Saturday. I got my 15-year-old vaccinated there and didn't have to drive him across town to the other place we were going to go to. So thank you, and everybody. Was it Ascension Health that was, that did that?
Yes.
Yeah, so does the Health Division actually, how does that work? Like, does the Health Division corral these providers to do the clinics?
Yeah, so Deb Glaser works on organizing all these, and so she's been instrumental in getting that done for our community.
Yeah, it was, it was easy, it was simple, in and out. It was, it was really wonderful. So that's what the Health Division is focused on. They said there's absolutely no waiting at drugstores, same day, people can come in. And she said not many people are making appointments, but, so they're a little concerned about that, and they're trying to do a lot of outreach in areas where they, they're just trying to target areas where they're more concerned, that people have concerns about safety. And so they're working very hard on public relations in that regard. They, the question was asked about, what about our under 12 community? And they said Pfizer is working on it. They didn't really say much more than that. Lots of clinics in schools, and, yeah, that's, that was about the conversation. We're going to have one more meeting in two weeks. We're going to break for the summer, and then we're just going to figure out, Carol suggested that maybe they just send us emails or, you know, some, some kind of system if things are moving, hopefully, in the right direction, so to protect their time a little bit more.
Yeah, from what I've heard in the press, for two-year-olds and up, I've heard everywhere from September through January, so I'm not sure where it actually lands. But obviously, when that happens, then trying to get the elementary schools, being as clinics, and preschool even, would be, would be wonderful once we get to that point.
I think what we'll be looking at is using BHHS again.
Oh.
Having a larger facility to accommodate more people is what we'll be looking at. Some of the latest updates, Pfizer could be going for emergency authorization as early as August. And if that holds true, then you're talking about those that want a vaccine, age 2 to 11, might be able to get it in August or September at the latest. But then knowing that it'll be an additional 21 to 26 days before they get that second dose.
And then it's two weeks after that.
To be fully vaccinated.
There's about a month and a half lag, as we know.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? With that, we will go to Board Business. Request to approve bid number two, North Hills Site Work and Foundation. Paul?
I'm President Colan, Superintendent Watson, board members. So really, tonight, we're presenting the bid pack number two that was presented to FFLA. It actually is a major milestone. This is the first large bid package of the 2020 bond. It's really a culmination of efforts from September of 2020, right after the bond passed, meeting with the facilities team, the user groups, as well as the financials. And as Trustee Kumar mentioned, the bids were issued for bidding in April, and on May 13th, very good bid coverage. And so tonight, you have four contractors for site work and foundation. It represents roughly 15% of the overall total program for North Hills. And at the end of the day, it includes interior concrete, exterior concrete, site work. And you also notice in the bid tabulation sheet, there was two credits for site work, for reusing some of the existing soils, as well as the asphalt for foundations, and then also credit for striping. So those were also voluntary alternates that were accepted, which did lower the price slightly. From the $6.16 million, this is about 1% the budget, below the budget, so it's great news. I think the timing of the project, of when the construction's going to work and start, which is, for those who are at the ribbon cutting, is going to be here very shortly, times out very, very, very well for the district. So going forward, a lot of multiple bidders. Again, very excited by the effort that Barton Mall put forth to get that bid coverage going forward. If you take a look at the architectural fees of French Associates, 5.6%, and general conditions, as well as contingency, again, those are also controlled by the owner. For that, brings the total award to $7,325,688.37, and it'll be funded through the 2020 bond program. So that'll open up for any questions the board may have.
Paul, did you say this is for the North Hills building? Okay.
Correct.
And can you remind us what the total allowance for that building is?
Yes, so it's just over $40 million, total project cost. So again, we presented the FFLA, South Hills, which is the next series of bids coming out. We'll do the same presentation at FFLA, showing here's the South Hills campus, total construction, but this 7.3 represents roughly 15% of that total program for the North Hills campus.
How many bids did we get from these, it looks like four bids?
Yeah, so actually, it was sent out to actually 715 different interested parties. So Barton Mall uses Sigma, which is the district standard to advertise public bid projects. 52 bidders actually responded to that, and of that, we received four to seven per bid category, so roughly, I think, 32 total bidders. And the bidders that are being presented tonight are the lowest responsible bidders, or just actually lowest in all the categories. From our perspective, Planta and Cressa's perspective, we worked with each of these contractors on various other programs within Southeast Michigan, so they understand the K-12 urgency to get things done. So great bid coverage. We heard some, you know, again, some other bond programs, hard-getting bidders, you know, missing a site piece, missing electricals. So again, I do commend the team, and Barton Mall especially, for getting the word out for this bid project, to have that much bid coverage. Because if you remember from FFLA, the DD estimate was roughly $1 million over budget. And again, we've said, you know, if you get enough bid coverage, you'd be able to close that gap, and fortunately, we've been able to close that gap from that perspective.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comment? Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following. Bid number 030000, interior concrete to Simone Contracting Corp. in the amount of $2,097,000. Bid number 031000, exterior concrete to Simone Contracting Corp. in the amount of $1,127,800. Bid number 320000, site work to Cotris Brothers Trucking and Excavating in the amount of $2,497,900. Bid number 321216, asphalt paving to Asphalt Specialists, Inc. in the amount of $438,000, with the addition of contingency in the amount of $616,070, along with the addition of general conditions in the amount of $169,419.25, and architect fees in the amount of $379,499.12. The total award amount is $7,325,688.37, to be funded by the 2020 bond fund.
Support. Support. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What is, what does it mean when the general conditions amount?
Yeah, so general conditions include things such as temporary barricades, temporary entrances, de-watering. So we know that the Lasser site has a high water table. So again, as they're taking out the old parking lots, any undercuts that have to be taken care of, that's included in that dollar amount. And that's, again, something that's presented to the owner prior to exceeding, expending those dollars. So it's kind of a checks and balance before that, those dollar amounts are expended, so.
So it's like the costs that are incurred doing the work, basically?
Yeah, these are the things like, so the architects and civil engineers put together the drawings. These would be things that are like, again, temporary phasing, barricades, you know, if you're on site today, you saw some of the flagging and things of that nature. But when you take a look at the interior, exterior, concrete foundations, we do anticipate a lot of de-watering. Just, again, it's a high-water table, and so as they're digging the foundations, and it's hard to say, I'm going to need a pump for two weeks or two months. So again, that's something that they, is presented to the owner, approved through that process.
Would that also be something like a construction trailer?
Actually, no. So the, the good part is Barton Mall's utilizing the existing spaces in Lasser.
Okay.
So, but yeah, you're right. If it was a, if it was a green site, it could be.
In a normal situation, when you had a green field, that's what...
Correct, yep. Yep, great question.
Any questions, discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. B, reconfirmation of extended continuity of learning plan. Can I get a motion?
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. We'll see you in June or July.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education reconfirmed Bloomfield Hills Extended Continuity of Learning Plan, as mandated by the State of Michigan, and as amended and updated to include all applicable federal, state, and local educational and safety mandates.
We have support.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Approval of board operating procedures. Lisa, do you want to make the motion?
On behalf of Policy Committee, I move that the Board, the Board of Education approve the board operating policy as presented or attached.
We have support.
Support. Support.
Any discussion? All those in...
I just, I just want to say, this has been a project that we've been working on for at least five years, and I really want to compliment Lisa and thank her for all the hard work she's put into this. Again, we've done this in fits and starts, and had one of our prior board members work on it, and we've gone to seminars and sessions with MASP, and had a lot of aborted attempts at this. So it's, it's just wonderful to actually reach this kind of a milestone where we actually have something that we can use going into the future, and to give our successors something to work on. I mean, again, the school board has been around for 50, 60 years, and we've never had this. And it's something that most school boards have, and we never did. So again, props to Lisa.
Thanks, Howard. I just want to reiterate that this is a group effort, and wouldn't have happened without everybody at this table, so thanks to everybody who worked on it and contributed to it and made it the document that it is, which is a good one, I think.
And I'm sure, and again, this is something that is a living document, and as things evolve, both in the world and within our district, that we have every opportunity to keep making changes. And also, these are the kind of things that you really don't want to have sitting on the shelf and just gathering dust, but really, you want to have these documents that you really use. Another thing that's useful for is really as new school board members come in, that we can hand this document to them, like we did the candidate document, and it gives them a little bit of background about what they're getting into. So again, it's a wonderful, wonderful effort that we've done.
And I'm happy, because in my day job in laboratory medicine, nothing, nothing gets done without the SOP, the standard operating procedure. So we are, and I'm sure that's true in mechanical production as well. So we, it is a great step forward in quality management, so thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Appointment of 2021, 2022, to board intern advisory council. Michelle, you'd like to make the motion?
Sure would. I move that the Board of Education support the recommendations for the school board interns and advisory council appointments as presented on May 20th.
We have support.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Before we go on, can someone just outline what the next steps are?
The next steps are, is that...
Could you get close to the mic?
The next steps are that Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, is going to reach out to all the candidates, let the candidates know who's been selected, and let the candidates know who were not. And then at our next board meeting, the candidates will be invited, along with their families, and then we'll have, similar to what we had tonight, we'll have a, we will recognize them, take picture, take a break, take pictures, and then they will get to work, right, Michelle?
Yeah, basically, that's what, that's happening. I'll be working with Superintendent Watson, which he will be doing most of the heavy lifting, but we will definitely be working together to contact the students and thank them for their dedication to the Bloomfield Hills School District, and their willingness to volunteer and extend their, their time to the school board.
Just reiterate, we had this conversation at the last board meeting last week, but all 22 of the students were absolutely incredible, so this was a very, very, very difficult decision to make.
Yep, no, I mean, just because you're not selected, I'm sure Superintendent Watson and Michelle will articulate how hard it was to make that decision for those students.
Agreed.
Okay, we will go to request to support the 2021, 2022 Oakland Schools budget. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution in support of, or in support of, the fiscal year 2021, 2022 proposed budget for Oakland Schools.
We have support.
Or to disapprove. Support.
Support.
Just let me give you just a little bit of thing. This can get a little confusing. There are 28 school districts in Oakland County. They are supported by something called a ISD, Intermediate School District, which is for Oakland County, called Oakland Schools. As a matter of fact, the superintendent of Oakland Schools, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, was just at our groundbreaking a few hours ago. There is a state law that says that, oh, there is a school board, similar to ours, there are five people on it, who oversee Oakland Schools. They approve the budget for Oakland Schools, but there is a provision in the law that Oakland Schools, because it is a support organization to the 28 districts, needs to develop their budget a few months early for the 2021, 22 school year, and provide it to all the 28 school districts, and all 28 school districts then have the ability to approve or reject their budget. Now, if you saw some of the material, they have multiple budgets. There's a general, general funds budget, there's a special education budget, and there's a career and technical education budget. So all we're voting on today is what we're responsible for voting on, which is the general budget, and it's purely advisory. So what we do is, we approve it, which I'm proposing that we do, and that will be, get transmitted to the Board of Education of Oakland Schools, and they will take that under advisement when they have to approve the final, make the actual approval, like we do for our budget in June. They will use our information and the information from the other 27 districts to advise them in terms of how they should be voting.
Thanks, Howard. We have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Sure.
No, I, it just, okay, so I'm going to confess my ignorance here. I have not read the budget. Last year, very controversial, right? There were big increases in the face of COVID, and none of the 28 districts were happy about it. Howard, or anybody who's read it, do you know what the situation is this year?
They have, well, two things. Number one, they got very few funds. I think it was like $1 or $2 million out of COVID. So where the, both the federal government and from Lansing gave pretty generous distributions to the local districts, the ISD's got very few funds, number one. Number two, because of that, they have been very prudent and said that until they get the formal budget approved, they will not give any increases to their employees. And all, any labor negotiations, and I know that was, you know, discussed extensively last year, any labor negotiation and changes to their contracts will all be contingent upon the approval of the budget that they have, and it would be a balanced budget.
Did they walk back any of those increases last year?
I do not know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But they, but they heard, basically, what we said last year, and were, you know, pretty circumspect in terms of when they, the material they sent us.
Okay. Motion, second. All those in favor, again, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I think most of the budget in here, Lisa...
Where it compares, it's very minimal if there were increases, but I didn't see any salary increase that I've seen so far.
And none of that budget...
The package that they gave us is like 300-odd pages, so it's very, very...
Right, right.
Voluminous.
Right.
But it's a good point that Jennifer raised, because we did it for last year. So even if it is identical, you know, there's that.
Did we get any information from Assistant Superintendent Kostick in terms of what her thoughts were? Because she also, you know, is normally responsible for taking a look at the details and giving us some sort of recommendation. at the details and giving us some sort of recommendation.
There weren't any concerns with it. I know we shared some of our feedback last year. There were no, no concerns this year with it.
What we voted, I mean, motion passes, and I will call for adjournment. I'm asking to adjourn.